Okay, it is six o'clock. Call the meeting to order pursuant to Governor 2020 order suspending certain provision for the open meeting law, GL Chapter thirty eight, session eighteen, and the Governor's June sixteenth, two thousand twenty one revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Great Barrington Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by, well, you've all figured that out, by following instructions on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL seven C thirty eight, section twenty F, after notifying the Chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. The beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, by the Town of Great Barrington, Burke for Ed, and by other members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listing of agenda items, those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So we'll start off the meeting by Select Board's announcements and statements. Garfield?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Eric?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to state, uh, the H I C, we had our charrette this past weekend. I feel it was, uh, very successful. We had five or six architects show up, a good crowd. And I just wanted to say thank you for too pleasant a name. Uh, they donated a whole sandwich platter and lunch bread. It was a good event and just wanted to say thank you for everybody that participated.
Thanks, Eric. Ed? Lee?
Uh, just to let everyone know that I will be abstaining from tonight's discussion on the ARPA funding and, um, any other remaining discussions on the same subject, so. I will be turning my camera and my, uh, my mic off.
Thank you. Um, I had just a couple of things about tonight's meeting, actually. There, just so I don't forget, there are six panelists and thirty-one attendees at this point. How the meeting is going to run tonight is the town manager will go over a presentation about ARPA funding, and this is a listening session for the Select Board. There will be no decisions, and I don't anticipate any discussion by the Select Board. When it's time for public input on the American Rescue Plan Act, just raise your hand, uh, through Zoom, you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll have to state your name and address for the record before you speak. So I'll turn it over to, uh, the town manager.
Hey Steve, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen in here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, I'm just gonna quickly run through our American Rescue Act, uh, sorry, Rescue Plan Act slides. These were originally presented to the Board publicly on October fourth, uh, two thousand twenty one. And, um, rather than going through every slide again, since we've already done that, I'd just like to, uh, touch on the basics tonight, so. Uh, so the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty one was signed into law on March eleventh. Uh, one hundred and thirteen billion dollars is going to Massachusetts, uh, both the state and, uh, local governments in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. There are four types of recipients, and we are considered that fourth category, non-entitlement units of government. Great Barrington is expected to receive just over two million dollars, so two million seventy-five thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, and we'll receive that in two payments. We've already received the first fifty percent, and we're anticipating the, uh, second fifty percent to roll in sometime in the next year. These are the five categories, uh, for eligible uses of this funding, and I really want to just stay here for a second. We will put up another slide at the end of this as we move into discussion, uh, time. But, uh, just remember, as you come forward tonight with comments or suggestions for how we use this money, it is restricted to these five categories, so public health funding, economic impacts of the public health emergency, lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers, and then water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Uh, these next couple of slides here are just more detailed slides of those categories, so I'm gonna just skip right over those. Reporting requirements, uh, this will be a heavy lift for, uh, for the town, uh, for our town accountant in particular. So I think what you'll probably see from us is larger, um, uh, projects coming forward rather than small, you know, thousand, twenty-five-hundred-dollar projects because, uh, again, it's a pretty heavy lift for reporting to the federal government, so. Uh, next steps, I just wanted to cover quickly, uh, all four of these next steps. So tonight, uh, Engage Community for Public Input, that is what is happening, uh, right now, uh, tonight's public in- input session. We also have a survey that, uh, staff has been working on all week, and that's to capture input from those that cannot attend tonight, uh, or weren't able to. So that survey is now up on our website, it's right on the homepage. Uh, it can be found at, uh, www.townofgb.org. Uh, there's eleven questions. We have two versions on the website, an English version and Spanish version, and we anticipate keeping this, uh, link live right through November twenty-second. So, uh, we're gonna give everyone about three weeks, uh, to participate if, uh, they're not able to, uh, provide input tonight. And it's a really quick and easy, uh, uh, survey. It, it takes, uh, about three minutes or less, and we also have paper versions that will be distributing to, uh, the, our libraries, our senior center, uh, I believe Tate, uh, Coleman, our intern here, distributed some earlier today, uh, to the food pantry, so we'll get those out, uh, and around town. Uh, create a staff review committee, which is the second bullet here. Uh, I anticipate after the survey closes that we'll put together, uh, a little committee here in-house to start reviewing the feedback that we received tonight, the feedback that we received from the, uh, surveys. We'll look at our strategic planning priorities, and then we'll also look at our capital plan. And then we'll prepare a recommendation that we'll come back to the Board with, uh, and present probably, uh, later this winter with some suggestions to get the conversation started. So. One, two. Bear with me here. There we go. Okay, so, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Chris Remble, Sue Carmel are both on the line. We're gonna be here taking notes, and, uh, Steve, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, there are now forty-three people total on, and I would ask if you're on a phone to hit star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute yourself. If you're not on a phone, just raise your hand, um, using the Zoom link. So the first one who's raised their hand, uh, is Allison Marchesi.
Steve, I'm gonna go ahead and get the, uh.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for, Steve, for acknowledging me at the meeting. I have a couple of questions, and if I go too long, please feel free to interrupt me. Um. So I think that in our group at this Community Development Corporation, for anybody who doesn't know me, I'm the Executive Director of the Community Development Corporation of South Berkshire. Um, our group have frequently talked about economic impact from, uh, a variety of things, COVID, um, and so forth, and we feel that the, um, answer to a lot of the economic impacts is affordable housing. So we feel like these things go in, you can't really separate how the economy grows from being able to provide workers and individuals and families with affordable homes. So my question is, how do you see the affordable housing, um, issue and need fitting into these distribution of ARPA funds?
So, we can take your question down. Mark, do you wanna comment on any of this?
I guess I would just say, Allison, all we're doing tonight is, is listening to feedback and taking notes. Uh, I don't anticipate any discussion or, uh, decisions being made this evening, so, uh, we're just here to listen at this point.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important that you tell us how you think it fits in more than we tell you how we think.
Well, I welcome that opportunity, thank you. Um, well, we see how it fits in from a variety of angles. Obviously, uh, the Community Development Corporation has just completed Bentley Apartments, and we're starting construction in a few short weeks on Windrush Commons, which is located at nine-ten South Main Street. Um, we feel that the need is running up behind us all the time, and we feel that the more funding that we could, uh, attain for a variety of initiatives, the better we could do at delivering the necessary housing that's so, so needed in the community and support businesses who are struggling, uh, every day to be able to find affordable homes for their management, for their waitstaff, for their variety of, um, people that they are looking to keep as close to business, uh, as possible. So I feel like we could, uh, supply more if we were supported with these funds.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Randy Jordan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question that I-
Just leave your name and address for the record, please.
All right, Randy, Randy Jordan, fifty-five Blue Hill Road. Okay, okay. So I just have a question, and, uh, I, I couldn't find this, and I was wondering if I could just get an answer. Is it true that, um, when we take this money, that we will have, the town has to adhere to all federal statutes, all federal regulations, all executive orders and mandates? Like, I don't under, I have, uh, heard that statewide, and I couldn't call you to find out if that was true. Like, what is the obligation? And I don't know if that's the purpose for this meeting, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, it, not necessarily the purpose for the meeting, but I, if Mark hasn't answered that, I'd be glad to let him answer.
I do not have an answer to that, I'm sorry, but I'd be happy to look into it.
We will find out an answer for you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, next we have, uh, Daniel Sykes.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Daniel Sykes, thirty-one Pleasant Street in Great Barrington. And actually, my question was the same as Randy's. I would just be curious to know exactly what are the conditions that are placed on the acceptance of the federal money? Because in, in a number of cases, uh, federal money does come with strings attached, and it's not always advantageous as much as a community would like to accept money, to accept it if there are conditions that would be onerous or in some ways contrary to the values of the community. So, um, I appreciate that Mark will look into this, and I, I look, uh, forward to somehow the town being able to publicize what are the specific conditions for acceptance of, of this money.
We'll, we will do that.
Right, thank you.
Can I ask for clarification? I'm, I mean, obviously, we have to obey federal laws. Is there, is there some specific thing we're concerned about, or it's not before?
Sure, I mean, just to say, for instance, some of the money that was, has been given to school districts in certain places came along with, uh, adherence to certain masking mandates and so forth for school-aged children. So I saw that in the, in the slide, I haven't looked at the slides, but I quickly saw that there was something about the Civil Rights Act. It would be interesting to know what adherence, uh, to that would mean. So just simply the, the fact that, um, uh, typically, federal money or often federal money will come with certain conditions, and it's just useful to know that before, uh, accepting it uncritically.
Thank you, thank you. Francis Coleman.
Hello, I'm Francis Coleman, thirty-four Blue Hill Road. And I, um, have lived here for forty-nine years, and much of the time that I've been here, we've been trying to have a sewer line brought up to, uh, about this level, about thirty-four Blue Hill Road. And, um, the, the need is ongoing. A lot of the septic systems, including my own, my neighbor Judy and Jeannette at, um-
Thirty and twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, Blue Hill Road. Uh, the septic systems fail because we live on a glacial moraine, and the drainage is not consistent. We're on its plate, it's, it's, um, plate stone, so, um, we are interested in working on that project to have the line brought up this far, from the corner of, um,
Roger.
Roger Road, where it is currently ending.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
Thomas Jensen, also with thirty-four Blue Hill Road. It's a, it's a project that is, the range and scope is about a quarter mile, and the houses that were, that needed right now are twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four. Those are the ones that maybe, may be needed, we don't know, but those are the ones that are in dire need, and you'll also hear from Judy Kales at thirty-two and Jeannette Chesnow at twenty-eight.
Thank you very much. Caleb Stone? Just unmute yourself, Caleb.
Hi, Steve, this is Jim Santos.
Hi.
I'm here with Caleb Stone, uh, representing the Southern Berkshire Ambulance Squad. Uh, we have a couple of, uh, concerns and items that we'd like to present. And with your permission, uh, Caleb is not a, a resident of Great Barrington, but he's our Chief of Operations, and I would like to, uh, let him speak if possible.
That's fine.
That's fine.
So I'm Caleb Stone, Chief of Operations for Southern Berkshire, so we just have a couple, I guess, items that we were looking at because COVID has impacted us quite a bit, that aren't necessarily part of our budget, that we're looking at doing that kind of larger items. And just being wondering if a town would be interested in helping us out with those, and it wouldn't be just Great Barrington, we'd ask all the towns to help out as well, but that'd be something that we'd be able to go into, because the co- couples that we're looking at are actually in the categories that are there.
Do you have more specifics?
I do, so, um, one is a, a stipend for our work for the E M Ps and paramedics that worked during COVID. We have quite a few that worked quite a few hours during COVID, so there's a stipend for them that was actually believed one of the categories we use it for. The other is, um, we're trying to remount our unit one, one of my handles that had a chassis failure that we no longer serviceable, um, and we are no longer able to get trucks in a speedy order. Right now, we're taking just almost two years to get new trucks, and so we're trying to remount one truck to get a truck back in service so we're not down fleet.
The more information we get, so the last question, do you have a price on that last item?
Uh, yeah, so the tentative price right now, which unfortunately has subject to change based on how much that they're uncharging for a new chassis, is gonna be a hundred and forty thousand total.
Okay, thank you, Caleb. Uh, Jane Rolfe, Construct.
Hi, Jane Rolfe, Executive Director of Construct. I also do not live in Great Barrington, but work there, and we have several offices there. Would like permission to speak.
You, you can speak.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, like Allison, I strongly encourage a sizable amount of the ARPA funds be set aside for affordable housing, for the reasons she stated, as well as the fact that Great Barrington is really primed to continue to make a difference in affordable housing. Uh, the town has done its, its research, it has supported affordable housing of many sizes and kinds over the years. It's done a housing, um, a housing needs assessment recently. It has an Affordable Housing Trust. It has CPA. You have all the pieces in place to, to have these ARPA funds, which are really basically found money. This is not money any of us expected. Um, and it's a chance to make a, a really profound difference in the town of Great Barrington and strengthen the economy overall. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jane. Appreciate it. Erica Milkie?
Hi, thank you, uh, Erica Milkie, thirteen East Street in Great Barrington. I would like to echo affordable housing and also looking at the list of things that it is, um, that's covered. Uh, I'm just thinking of all the essential workers, um, and I am really appreciative that the essential workers that are listed include some that aren't often thought of, like, um, the grocery store attendance and childcare. Those things were super important during the pandemic, and, um, just every time I, I went to the grocery store, I saw people I knew who, you know, a, a dollar extra that Big Y was paying their employees or something, that, that did not, um, really measure the risk that they were taking by being on the front line every day for those of us buying groceries and stuff. So, um, I would love to see those two areas, um, wages for essential workers and affordable housing. I believe the following suggestion isn't covered anywhere here. I don't think it's eligible, but when I forwarded information to a bunch of my friends and, um, coworkers in Great Barrington, everybody was like, wouldn't it be great if we could use that money for a new schoo- new high school? But, um, quite sure that that, I don't see any fine print that that could be squeezed under. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Uh, Judy Kales?
Hello?
Hello. Just say your name and address for the record, please. Unmute yourself here, mute it, Judy. We did hear you once, Judy, so just unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Judith Kales, and I have lived at thirty-two Blue Hill Road for forty-eight years. Um, in January two thousand five, I had a telephone conversation with Don Chester, who at the time was the town engineer, and he fully supported the extension of the sewer line up Blue Hill Road. Uh, and he had already recommended to the Board, uh, the Select Board that the line be extended. And two years prior to that, in two thousand three, Mr. Chester had made a list of all the properties on Blue Hill Road and made a case for expansion, um, showing a distinct need to connect to the town sewer system. Unfortunately, the border, the Select Board and town manager then, Burke Leclerc, did not want to pursue the matter, so Chester's efforts yielded no result. Another strong proponent for extending the sewer line was Sandra Martin, former head of the Board of Health, who advised me personally in December two thousand five not to replace my septic system because the town would soon be extending the Blue Hill Road sewer line. I later heard that Martin had resigned from the Board of Health in exasperation and the inability to get anything done on this issue. But now there is a way available to fund this long-delayed project, and I call upon the Board of Selectmen to get the job done with the funding made available under the American Rescue Plan Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Allison, would you like to speak again? I usually don't let people speak twice, but I make exception tonight.
Oh, thank you, Steve. I, um, I wanted to bring up a second point. Uh, the CDCSB has two missions. One is affordable housing, the second is economic development and supporting small businesses. We have started a direct service to small businesses with free one-on-one professional consultations, and I've already served thirty-one businesses in South County and beyond. And I would like to just put out there that more support, and I see this as being one of the line items, to, to be able to help businesses would be, uh, a big benefit both for my organization and I'm sure for the number of organizations in the area that have this task. We feel it's essential to try to keep those businesses afloat. That's, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So the next one is someone labeled the Town of Great Barrington. I don't know who that is. But, do you wanna identify yourself, please?
Yeah, that's, uh, Vivian Orlovsky. Um, um, I got that label on my Zoom when I represented the town on behalf of the Agricultural Commission, and I don't know how to change it.
No, no problem, Vivian, just give your name and address.
Uh, Vivian Orlovsky, Lakeview Road, Great Barrington. Um, actually, I'm speaking now about a concern of the Agricultural Commission, but not something that we've had a chance to vote on, uh, which will take place when we meet later this month. And one of the things I wanted to request, it would, um, in terms of your timeline, which seems fairly flexible over the next few weeks, uh, would it be possible for the Agricultural Commission, uh, to submit a s- suggestion, uh, you know, toward the end of the month?
That, that will be fine.
So that's number one. And, and number two, in terms of your overall timeline, not necessarily concerning the Agricultural Commission, but including it, I, I'd like you to think back two years ago to November two thousand nineteen. At that point, would any of us have thought what would be happening just six months later in April twenty twenty? With the, uh, with the pandemic, with the lockdowns, with the, the businesses closed, with everything, and people getting deadly ill and overload of our health system. Um, it, it was, it was an incredible switch within just six months of what we normally had in our lives and what things changed too. So with that in mind, we are living now in times of a lot of climate change disturbances, uh, which can affect, we know, and from the Agricultural Commission, one of you, we know that it's going to affect, uh, agriculture, but it's also gonna affect commerce, and, um, then we also see the beginning of some pretty serious supply chain problems, which kind of have a cascading effect, that a lot of the things that we count on using in our lives and in our businesses and for the town, um, may not be available because the manufacturers are missing a part that's stuck in the supply chain bottleneck. So, uh, things are really developing now in ways that we may not be able to predict, um, even six months from now. And given the fact that fortunately, the ARPA timeline seems fairly broad, I would ask that whatever decisions the town team makes, that you make it only for partial use of the funding and leave some of the expected funding in reserve to look at in, in later in, in two thousand twenty-two, when we have a better idea of what forthcoming needs might be, which might be very difficult to predict now. Um, so that's, that's my request, two, two requests. One, immediate in terms of just the timeline for the agcom to, uh, to, to make some suggestions at the end of the month. And number two, for whatever you're deciding, to, to look at this as something that, um, trying to commit everything right from the start could leave us in a, at a disadvantage i- if, if things change rapidly over the next year.
Thank you, Vivian. Anyone else? Just raise your hand. Michelle LaBere?
Uh, hi, um, Michelle LaBere, Seventy Division Street. I'm really pleased with some of the, um, questions that are coming up. Uh, I'm taking notes a- as we go along here. Um, a couple of things, I agree with the points brought up regarding what, how will the town of Great Barrington be obligated with regard to mandates from the federal government and the rules put in place with regard to the acceptance of this money? So I too am interested in that. Uh, before the ambulance squad spoke, I was going to bring, bring up possibly, the possibility of assisting our ambulance squad, uh, just because some, um, difficult decisions have had to be made with regard to our ambulance squad, but they were on the front lines during the, uh, COVID crises. I like the conversation with regard to the essential workers. Uh, I'm related to a central worker that's pretty much been run right into the ground during the COVID crisis, and it, it could be thankless, and I think, uh, um- And it it could be thankless and I think uh um sometimes these people don't even get a thank you at the counter. So um I think that's important, it it that we value them. The one other point I'd like to bring up, and this one's a bit selfish on my part and biased. Um generally in crises like this, the arts are not often thought of. Uh they go by the wayside and um having a daughter that's heavily involved in the arts. Um hearing this, what that area has been put through. Um you know, possibly there's s- something we can do to help the arts in our area as well. Uh it is an impacted in uh, you know, industry in the area along with hospitality and tourism. So um I I'd love to hear uh. Our our organizations come forward and and talk about this as well. Um because I I think sometimes they're not thought of and I like to bring them to the forefront. And the last thing would be, and not to sound like a broken record, people in Husatonic still do not have quality water. And if any of this money could be used to assist our residents, I realize Husatonic Water is a private water company. But even to be used to for filtration in people's houses. Um it's a horror story in Husatonic and perhaps this will do something to alleviate some of the pain that Husatonic residents are going through. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh Jean Chesno?
Hello?
Hello, just say your name and address for the record, please.
Jeannette Chesno, twenty-eight Blue Hill Road.
Go right ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I grew up in on Blue Hill Road in the nineteen thirties and forties when the area was very rural. Uh the road wasn't paved, there was no mail delivery or town water. Some of our neighbors had outhouses, we had an indoor bathroom. Either way, the wastewater ended up in a little brook that flows through our property. And occasionally in the summer, when the brook went a little dry, my father had some cleaning out of the brook to do. Uh today, uh conditions are are somewhat better, but I can say that the wastewater treatment that we have on the hill. Is not satisfactory and I'm here to um say that having a a grant that would pay for some of the installation of a sewer line. Would be a great boon for us. We have now in our house uh at twenty-eight, we have a uh, a uh. A uh a hose, uh it's a, it's a um a system that has a tight tank. We, that was a desperation thing that Sandra Martin advised us to get. It's a one thousand gallon tank that needs pumping at least ten times a month. And it costs two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars each time it's pumped. So consequently, this is not an ideal situation for, I have a grandson who might be wanting to live there. That would put it out of his budget range. The that amount um is the same as the property taxes that I pay. So uh we're not in a good situation, a sewer line is the only situation. My one-third acre lot does not hurt anywhere, never has. And it's not possible with the stony uh conditions of to have a any kind of a leach field. And so I'm particularly anxious and my neighbors think that um of all the people on the hill. That I seem to have had the most problems. So I I'm um I'm speaking on behalf of my son Andre as well. We hope to have our house livable again and a sewer line is our only hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Philip Hornstein?
Um yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanna, I'll, I'm, much of what I was gonna say has already been mentioned, but I certainly wanted to uh reinforce the fact that the uh the legislation certainly encourages investment. In water, in 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 drinking water. Um and sewer infrastructure investments and uh we certainly have a fair amount of that on the on uh in front of the town right now. So that seems to be an ideal use for it. Um one, I certainly endorse the idea of allocating some portion to the Southern Berkshire Ambulance. Uh there is a pr- fairly clear need there. Uh one thing that, another thing to consider or two things is um uh potentially investments in in our broadband infrastructure. There are many rules there, we cannot uh, you can only be, my understanding is we can only use it. To provide residents with broadband who really currently do not have any alternatives right now. So it cannot just be used to improve access, but provide some access. But I do believe that there are some residents who could benefit from that. And lastly, I certainly endorse the affordable housing initiatives, I think it's pretty clear that the funds can be used for that. Um it can also be used for uh uh more, a more quick infusion of rental subsidies for residents who are. Facing eviction and who are not uh receiving other types of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew O'Brien?
Hello, my name's Matthew O'Brien, I live at thirty-three Van Duzenville Road. In Great Barrington. Um I would also be very interested, I know there's a lot of need for this money. But I would also be very interested in what the obligations are uh of the federal government towards the town. Um I know that that always comes along, I understand that there's a few towns in Pennsylvania. And one in New Hampshire that just turned it down because of that, I'm not sure, I haven't been able to look into it. Uh but that seems to be some something in there that might be worth looking at, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Um Kristen Grippo?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
I I live at thirty Pine Street. And uh I just, I just want to concur with some of the things I've heard tonight. I'm also deeply concerned about what obligations we'll have um toward this this money and um. Around what it might look like, I know a lot of times it's sort of based on the worst case scenario for towns and I don't think Great Barrington is the same as New York City. I have a toddler here next to me, so he's joining in. Um and I I really deeply uh believe the affordable housing is an issue, I've been renting this apartment for nine years um at a reasonable rate. And now it's on the market and so um we're gonna have to leave Great Barrington, my husband and child and I, because we can't afford to live in this town anymore. So um I think that's a really reasonable request, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh it just says Holland, so if you give me your full name and address, please.
Hi there, um I'm using my wife's computer at the moment, um I'd just like to state, my name is Dawn Eaton, E A T O N. And and I am no, I am also not a resident of Great Barrington. Um however, I am a board member of the C D S, C D C S B, Alice Artesi.
I I will allow you to talk with that connection only.
I I appreciate it. Thank you, now, I I didn't have really, really too much to say, except I just wanted to let you know that I, in my interest, obviously, it was is is within affordable housing in the Berkshires. That's why I'm a board member and uh that I fully endorse the need, you know, for funding, for small business support as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. Michelle, you have something to add?
Uh actually, just a question, and I apologize for speaking twice, you know, with the discussion with the sewer. Um and I don't know if this is possible with the structure of how this money is dispersed to towns, but I just wanted to throw this out there. That many of our residents are attached to sewer, but they have probably not as dire as Blue Hill Road. Uh but septic systems that should be upgraded, they just don't have the money to do it or replace. So I'm just throwing this out there and I don't even know if it's possible with this is even with gr- grants to people. Uh where a sewer line wouldn't be feasible, the town of Great Barrington would be too costly or for whatever reason to bring in a sewer line. But gi- the giving some sort of um uh avenue for people who have septic systems. To upgrade their septic systems rather than having possibly a septic system that's leaking. If if you know, uh or whatever, but I just thought I would throw that out there as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else. We will move move ahead, it's been a helpful, really good comments. Um citizens speak, anyone want to speak on any other issues? Seeing no one, um. I will do select board time again. Um we're not gonna discuss what we heard tonight, but if an, if anyone has anything else. Um Garfield? You're muted, Garfield. You're muted, Garfield.
Lee, did the Monument Girls win?
No, but we're in the States, we're waiting to see where we're seated, so we're still playing, thank you.
Good question, Eric.
Last game, though.
Uh nothing, thank you.
Ed?
Uh yeah, just a quick question, I've been on the board seven years and I've never heard about this Blue Hill issue. Um it, it doesn't have to be at a meeting, Mark, but I I would just love an update, maybe this is something that, you know, we should be looking at whether or not we use this money for it.
Yeah, it it was discussed before your time.
And so I would, I guess I'd like to just at least see if it's something we should talk about at a future meeting, thanks.
Yeah, Lee?
And nothing, no.
And and I have nothing, um any media time? Uh I really appreciate everyone attending and by unanimous consent, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, see you.
Thank you, everyone.